I would like to call to order this independent, this work study session of independent school district 624. I'd ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Daniels?
Here.
Newmaster?
Here.
Strike OG?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Arcan, here. Malloy?
Here.
All right, we'll get into our first discussion item, the review of fiscal year 24-25 preliminary budget. Tim Wald and Andy Johnson.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have the, we're bringing the preliminary budget to the school board. We start with look at the budget cycle, and just a reminder that the process for developing this budget began back in July and October, when an independent audit, our annual independent audit process occurred. And that prepares our data for the, for the audit report that occurred in January of this year. Upon receiving the audit results, we create our mid-year budget adjustments that we bring to the board in January, February each year, and the projected budget for the following year. The projected budget is a document that allows us to, that guides our planning for the next year. As the legislature goes through its process and as they wind up, then we have much better numbers that inform our budget, and we bring the preliminary budget to the school board at the work session in May, and then in June, we'll bring it to you as an action item. Like to just put this slide up as a reminder to the board and to the public that there's been a long history of underfunding of our public schools. If you look at this document, it shows the general education formula allowance over time. And the blue line would, indicates what that funding level would be if the funding level had just maintained pace with the rate of inflation since 2003. But that orange line indicates what the funding level has been, and that, this document does include the last, or current biennium funding. So you can see that really over the last several years, we continue to lose significant ground. This is important because this is the general fund budget that allows us to hire staff, that allows us to pay for materials and resources that we use to educate our children. So this is something that every school district in the state is very painfully aware of, and likely every school board in the state is well aware of. So as, we just like to remind people of that funding and to continue to challenge leaders in the state of Minnesota to fully fund public education. Okay, so we look at the projected budget, and Ms. Johnson will walk us through all the numbers.
Good evening. So before our U, we have the preliminary budget for the upcoming 24-25 school year. That's the column that's shaded. So those are the numbers that I'll be focusing on tonight. For next school year, we're looking at revenues of about $142,343,000, and expenses of $141,524,000. So more revenue than expenses to the tune of about $818,000. So these amounts factor in the budget adjustments that the school board approved earlier this spring. That $818,000 then gets rolled into our fund balances, which are laid out down below. So all of our expenses end up going through certain fund balances based on the nature of the expense. The bulk of our general fund operations flows through that blue line, the ending fund balance unassigned. So for next school year, we're looking at an ending fund balance of about $11,075,000, which would put us at 8.2% of our total general fund expenses, and that excludes our long-term facility maintenance expenses. And the school board policy requires that we maintain an 8% fund balance, so that's always our target as we present this to you as a school board, showing that we're gonna be maintaining that 8% fund balance. We also show a projection for next school year, and these are now preliminary. The legislature just wrapped up their work over the weekend, so there's nothing built into that based on what the legislature has approved. And we also know that next year will be a budget year, and so there may be some changes in that projection for '25-'26. But currently, based on what we know, we are looking at an ending fund balance for next school year of $11,128,000. They assume some projected budget adjustments of about $1.7 million, but it's pretty early to be sure about those. We'll continue to monitor what's going on around the state and make some changes down the road, as we know, next winter. So then we have three other funds that we present to the school board for approval. The Nutrition Services Fund, the Community Services Fund, and the Debt Service Fund. So the Nutrition Services Fund is all of our lunchroom activities. So all of the meals, the breakfast lunches that we serve to our students. I recognize as I look at it, it's very small on the presentation, so apologies for that. As we know, there's been a lot of change at the legislature when it comes to nutrition services. We had free meals, then we didn't, and now we do again. And so this is showing a projection of about $6.5 million of revenue for next school year, and then $6.9 million of expenses. So we're looking at spending down some of that fund balance. We were able to grow our fund balance in the Nutrition Services Fund because of the reimbursement rate that we've been receiving from the feds for, like, the COVID reimbursement rate was higher than our expenses, and so we're able to spend down that fund balance for the next couple of years. They're looking at an ending fund balance in Nutrition Services of about $1.9 million, which is 28% of their annual expenses. The Community Service Fund was also, had, also had an impact related to COVID, unfortunately the other way. As COVID was rampant, we had a lot less students and families signing up for activities, but we still had some of those fixed costs. So we're working our way out of a deficit there in the, in the Community Services Fund, but we do have a plan to get us back up to that target 8% fund balance in that fund. For next school year, we're looking at just shy of $8.5 million of expenses and then, or of revenue, and about $8.2 million of expenses. So looking to grow that fund balance by $234,000 for next year, making that about a negative 2.9% fund balance as a percent of expenses. And then the Debt Service Fund is essentially like where our mortgage payments flow through. So if you think about your house payments, that's where all of our bond payments flow through. And that's all driven by our debt schedule. So the voter-approved debt, we have a set schedule. All of that revenue is tied to those debt payments coming out. So about $30,610,000 of revenue for next year, $31 million of expenses. So we're gonna spend down that fund balance a little bit. That's just set by the Department of Education. We'll end up at about $4.5 million for next year, or 14.6% of our expenses. So I threw a lot of numbers at you. We'll be bringing this forward for approval at the June regular board meeting. But if there's any questions, happy to take them.
Open it up for any questions, if anyone has any questions. Okay, I just have one regarding the nutritional services.
Sure.
And just seeing the difference in the revenues and expenses. Are we expecting that to continue looking that way as we, or is it just?
No. No. One of the really great things about having that additional fund balance is we're able to tackle some one-time expenses. So we're able to plan for some equipment replacements and upgrades, and so, no, we're not continuing to project a deficit. You may see a deficit, again, for another year or two, just as we have that high fund balance, but it's not a structural imbalance, I would say.
Great, thanks. That's it. All right. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to our next discussion item, which is Birch Lake Elementary Multi-Tierred Systems of Support Update. Allison Gillespie, yes? Alyssa Gillespie, no? Okay.
Yeah, I'll, we have Julian Stanky, Principal at Birch Lake Elementary. I'll let him and Cynthia Mueller introduce Kelly.
All right, good evening, everyone. Members of the board, thank you very much for this opportunity and the time to share with you about our multi-tiered systems of support at Birch Lake. We're excited to share and learn our learning and growth and collaboration, and our hopes for continued growth for our Birch Lake Bears. So thanks for this opportunity. I'm Julian Stanky. I'm the principal at Birch Lake, and I'm here with two of my wonderful colleagues.
I'm Kelly Tokas-Bach, Instructional Coach at Birch Lake in Willow Lane.
And Cynthia Mueller, Principal and Specialist. I'm a district literacy specialist.
All right. So what you can see here is our Birch Lake mission. And one of the core components of our mission is that we want to educate and enrich the whole child as an individual through a vital system. And what we're gonna share with you tonight is that that vital system is our multi-tiered system of support. So if you're not familiar with it in a few slides here, we'll get back to the, kind of the bigger picture of that scope with Cynthia. But we'll start talking a little bit now about our tactics at Birch Lake. And this was done with the work of our leadership team last summer, and it really is two-pronged. So the first prong is looking at a literacy focus, and the second is to focus on access for all students that are coming through our doors. And so, yeah, thank you. Here's a quick look at our demographics for Birch Lake. So we are a small but mighty school. We're about 225 students. And what's really important for us at Birch is that 40, about 40% of our students are receiving free and reduced benefits in our building. That can mean a variety of things, coming from a range of food insecurity to housing insecurity, or even a high level of transancy. And that heavily impacts how students learn and how they come ready to learn at school. Another big distinguishing factor that you'll notice on there is that we do have a high ML population for our building. Right now, we're hovering around 17% of our students are receiving ML services, and that does include new-to-country. So for our building, it's around, right now, just shy of 40 students that are receiving those services as well. Something that's really unique and, I think, special to Birch as well is that if you come to visit, you'll hear in the hallways or the classrooms, a lot of Spanish being spoken. And that is, speaks a lot to our, our identity as a building right now and how we're growing and shifting and changing. So like I said, next, Cynthia's gonna talk a little bit about the MTSS bigger picture.
Yeah, so MTSS stands for Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, which really is a continuous improvement framework. Minnesota Department of Edg encourages school districts to adopt an MTSS approach. Great news for us. We have already been on that path for quite a while. And MTSS broadly as a framework has multiple components, one of them being multi-layered practices of support, which really is how are we responsive to students, ensuring this guarantee for all students, but then that we have multiple ways to support them for whatever their needs are. So MTSS, prior to MTSS, it was often called Response to Intervention, which was just a very small portion of MTSS. But commonly associated with that is the triangle. And so we still view the triangle as far as understanding that we want to ensure low risk for our students, that whatever we are doing, that we're reducing risk, we're helping them really flourish, and that we have supports in place for if they're not yet, that we can be responsive to them. So I bring this up, this, the pyramid, for an important reason as we look next to our data and then the approaches Birch has been putting into place around this. So our universal core instruction, often our goal is at minimum 80% of our students are successful with just the tier-one core instruction. And then we know we also will need to be responsive to approximately 20% of students in other ways, having additional supports. And as we move through those tiers, it becomes more intensive, more resources, more opportunities for students to respond and get feedback. So when we look at our intervention modeling around academics or social-emotional learning, we're always looking at the data in this framework, and then also as a measure of how effective is our core being. So when we look at the next set of data, what we're going, you're going to be noticed is the color coding is going to match the tiers of instruction, but the color coding also goes to risk level. So with that, and similar when I was here with Principal Matt Manier from Willow Lane, we looked at the kindergarten data. This evening, we're going to look at, focus on the kindergarten data again for a couple of reasons. One, this is that first entry point into our K-12 system here as far as elementary moving forward. Thank you. And then the other piece is, when we look at in terms of literacy, again, we're focused on our literacy data, our kindergarten teachers were the first ones to complete letters training, and they are fully implemented in terms of CKLA. So this is really where we're looking at those leading indicators of success around what we are doing and working on in terms of literacy. We also will have some lagging indicators, one of them being the MCA, and including some of our fast bridge data, screening data in the older students. We are seeing some amazing, promising results across the board, but tonight, we're going to focus on kindergarten. So what I have here is the FAST Early Reading Composite. Again, the Early Reading Composite is, takes into account multiple subtests in reading that are highly predictive to future reading success. And so it kind of combines those scores, those subtest scores, so you can see overall as a screener how are students doing. What we have here are three different sets of data. Wish we had had the spring data in time for this presentation. We're getting really close, and it's really exciting. But we did officially have the fall and winter data. What I want to show here, though, is, so we have the '21-'22 school year, the top left, the '22-'23, top right, and then this school year. And this is specific to Birch Lake Elementary. What we can see is, with lots of work, we are still increasing some risk with students. Now, this school year, we are seeing a reduction in the risk, which means our green is increasing, which is the exact direction we want to be going. And so when we look at data like this, we put some things into place, and then it's also reflecting on what has led to these results, so we can continue to replicate that, build on that, multiply that. So this is the broad screener data. Then we have a few of the subtests that Kelly is going to highlight.
Yeah, so the next few slides will give you some information on three of our subtests that are highly predictive of later reading success. The first one I'm gonna talk about is word segmenting, which is the one you can see on the screen right now. So you've got data from the winter on the left, and then on the right, you've got data, oh, data from '22-'23 winter, and then next to it, you've got data from '23-'24 winter. So in winter of '22-'23, we had a significant amount of risk. About 60% of our kids were at risk. If you look at the data from '23-'24, we decreased our risk nearly by half. And what we're starting to see, if you can look at the bar on the right, is that we're starting to look more like that pyramid, where we have a small slice of our kids who we know will always have, will need lots of help, kids who'll need a little extra help, and then the rest of our kids who are responding well to the core curriculum. So next, I'll talk about letter sounds, which is really exciting and highly predictive of future reading success. See, as you can see, we've got that winter data from '22-'23 next to the winter data from '23-'24, and we were very excited about how things had changed with our letter sounds from winter to winter. However, I have even more exciting news. I have some preliminary spring data. So right now, we're looking at a Tier 3 of our kindergartners at 10%, which is so much more in line. So then we know when we're servicing those kids, we're really, truly servicing the kids who need it the most. Our Tier 2 is now at 27, or 27% preliminarily, and then 63% in the green, low risk. So that's just, to me, that's, I've never seen data like this in my career, and it's just beyond exciting. And so the last one is nonsense words, and this is a really important one because this is where we put some words in front of our kids, three, typically three-letter words that they decode or they read on their own, and we're looking for how many can they do in a minute. So they're applying their letter sound knowledge, and then they're also applying that phonemic awareness that we're always looking for. And as you can see, we're looking from winter to winter again, and you can see we did decrease risk pretty, I mean, we were pretty excited about this. But again, I looked at the spring data, and our Tier 3 in nonsense word decoding, which is highly predictive of later reading ability, is down to 3% preliminarily, preliminarily. Our Tier 2 is at 23%, which is also right in line with that triangle. And then we're looking at a 73% no risk for our Tier 1 kids who are responding to that curriculum, which, again, we've never seen data like this. So this is very exciting. So I'm gonna pass it to Julian, and he's gonna give you more info about what this approach entails.
So how, right? Like, that's the question with this. How does this system best function and how we found this success? Because it's really exciting. We're just a couple of weeks away from sharing this information with our teams individually, and we are just so looking forward to this, because it's a lot of hard work that's got into this. The first point is through alignment. And through that alignment, we're increasing the cognitive load, but we're ensuring that we're also using common language and common practices and common resources. So it's not adding more new, different things in these small groups. It's a continuation of what's already being practiced in the classrooms. All educators at Birch have now been trained in letters, which is the science of reading training. Myself, and I believe it's four of our special educators, are left to do Year 2 next year. So I'm wrapping up my Year 1 with that team too, which has been a really fun training. And then the last piece is through our collaborative data analysis. So what that looks like is that we're doing screenings three times a year. That's that fall, winter, spring. And then we're doing progress monitoring for our Tier 2 every two weeks. And then for our Tier 3, we're doing progress monitoring on a weekly basis. What that allows us to do is respond to individual student needs almost immediately based off of consistent sets of data too.
So a little bit more detail then, that first point around alignment. So this is something also we've worked on as an entire elementary system, is that aligned student experience. Educators have heard this phrase quite frequently. We want an aligned experience for students. What we mean by that is what's happening in their core instruction? How did that language, the methods and approaches that are evidence-based, how are they also happening in Tier 2 and Tier 3? So the student doesn't have to do kind of this code-switching between the adults that might be working with them. So this is one example of those aligned curriculum experience expectations that we have provided to buildings and educators, and then done a lot of work around. So in terms of alignment, our scope and sequence around phonics instruction, what's happening in the core instruction, it's also happening in Tier 2, Tier 3, so we can use those assessments fluidly. The routines and approaches that are in our core curriculum, which are really those multisensory components when we talk about, especially our students that are struggling with reading, might be students with dyslexia. They really need that multisensory approach, and our core curriculum does that. We're pulling those into our Tier 2 and Tier 3, so the students have those same strategies, no matter what tier they are in. And then also our materials. Our core curriculum has a robust set of materials to give the students hands-on access to reading. And so we're incorporating those into our Tier 2 and Tier 3. So students get repetition. They really need that repetition and practice to solidify those skills. And so this has been a key strategy that we are using to align, and then...
And then I get to talk about some examples, and I'm so excited because our intervention team at Willow, or at Birch Lake, has led the way with this. They have provided a lot of leadership for the rest of the district with this. And so what is represented on the slide is what, if I were a first grader, I might walk into my classroom and see a chart, just like that, or on the bottom. It's a little hard to see, but it's an individual code chart where kids get to keep track of all the sound spellings they learned. I would see that in my small group, and then I would also see it in my classroom. So as a child, I am seamlessly flowing in between these tiers and truly not, it's not increasing my cognitive load. I don't have one teacher calling it the bossy R and one teacher calling it the R-controlled vowel, right? It's the same. And so that really decreases cognitive load, which increases cognitive desk space for our kids to learn.
All right, so as Kelly referenced too, really proud of our intervention team at Birch Lake. So it's Tammy Reed, Jean Lodermeier, and Michelle Gratz. And they have really been leaders across the district in the collaboration with our greater system, and ensuring that all nine schools are getting to the same spot with this and that we're being consistent. So they were one of the first teams on board to be fully using the CKLA's assessment tools, and that's a big part of why we're seeing such great success, we believe. And so the three data meetings that we're having after each screening, a lot of that is the work of our intervention team, and then alongside with Kelly is our instructional coach. So they're following the data meetings. They're checking in with the teachers every six weeks. They're having individual meetings as they're needed. And like I said, with the data points of our progress monitoring, that can be as often as truly needed. And then they also played a significant role in our communities of practice this year, being advocates, especially around our progress monitoring, because that is a new practice for our building and to this degree and specificity. So they've been champions for this work. And then when making decisions driven by the data, where the data is not just limited to our literacy components that we've been talking about tonight. We're also talking about some of our social-emotional screeners that we're doing as well. And we collaborate, and we collaborate not just to the classroom teachers, but our coach, our interventionist, our school psych, our social worker, student support, and we consider the whole child as we present our interventions and the plans for that. This also promotes our collective efficacy and our collective responsibility to each student at Birch. So with that, are there any questions?
I'll open that for Ms. Malloy.
Do you guys have data on the different cohorts, like the second year, the third year data? Because you've got, what, '21-'22 kindergarten class? Do you have cohort data?
Yes, not on hand here tonight, but yeah, we have in our edutclimbers system. We have, we've tracked the cohorts of students throughout the years.
So what's the data look like, Year 2, Year 3, after?
Yep, after.
After implementing?
Yeah. So where we're seeing our greatest decrease in risk right now are in our primary grades, the ones that have had the letters training the longest. They're still at those foundational reading skills. We're definitely seeing some leading data there that's showing some success. Our older grades, I'm really anxiously awaiting the spring data to really see, because now this will be a full year of the new curriculum under our belt and seeing how students are doing there. The fall to winter, we saw a pretty steady pace as we have historically. We didn't see any significant reduction in risk yet.
Ms. Daniels, I'm Newmaster.
So this is great. I was gonna ask a similar question because the first few slides were different cohorts, different groups of kids. So it's pretty hard to compare sometimes when they're at the same point in year or groups. But really like the sound of all your, yeah, that's very, very exciting. And I also noticed that multilingual program, and we don't say the L anymore. The L is not something we use?
Correct. Yep, we've moved to the, to align with the recommendation around multilingual, to look at it as an asset.
Right.
Yep, based approach. So it's still, though, federally, they are going to say English-based.
Okay. And then just knowing that you have some setting three programs in your building, and the students are familiar with that program, and seeing that that red, yeah, those kids are included, right? And those kids are included, so you can see that risk reducing, particularly because you have a large setting three program there, is really exciting too.
Can I respond? Yeah, and I think just thinking about this cohort of kids, as they matriculate up, there's no better time to reduce risk. There's no more cost-effective, more human resource-effective time to reduce that risk than from the get-go in kindergarten. And so that's the exciting piece of this, is we have really narrowed it down. And so those, those small percentages of kids who need help, they're the right kids, and we can have resources that we can, more resources, because there are fewer of them who are landing in that at-risk category. So it's just really, and like I said, I've never seen data like this.
I had a couple of similar questions. It obviously looks good, and I've been following this development. And I wondered, because I was looking at the bar graphs and things, everyone looks like there's a lot of improvement, but you really can't tell where a certain group, like if it's free and reduced lunch, how do those kids compare to, you know, are the same kids improving a lot and everybody else some? Are you gonna have the data to know where they're at-risk kids what?
So we have that data, but I would just, I can speak anecdotally because we will look at that data once this spring, once we're all done. You've got it all collected and together. But just preliminary or anecdotally, what I see, particularly, especially at Birch, because we have so many students who are coming in, and they may, they may know how to read in their home language. They may not. And so I see them coming in, though, and whether they're fluent in their home language or not, they are decreasing their risk. I can't give you specifics on that right now, but that's anecdotally what I'm seeing. We've got kids who can read in Spanish and English.
Well, when you look at, for example, just looking at, we don't have all the data for this year, but you have it for last year. I guess I'm just wondering, because we always put things in, and the kids who do well do well and better. And the kids that are struggling, I mean, how do you know in your data somehow it shows? it shows?
Yeah, we can disaggregate, and we do disaggregate when doing data analysis by different demographic groups and looking at, yeah, are we, who are we reducing the risk for, who are we not yet? Those are all part of, like, when they talked about their data meetings that they have in their buildings throughout the year, they do those. We also, every summer, we have a kind of a data retreat, and we have all of that preliminary data too, to just, as we set building-wide goals around instruction and improvements for students, we have all of that data disaggregated.
Okay. I just wondered how specific, and the other thing, when I was looking at the demographics, you know, the numbers don't add up, because people pick more than one category, I'm assuming.
Yeah, demographic data-wise, yes, there is, there could be an overlap around.
And then I'm just going to ask my, my other question, is you talked about collaboration with everyone, and I realize that you don't have much of, like, since media specialists, but you do have a little bit more than the previous year, and they're an important part of literacy. So how is that collaborating to nurture kids and broaden cultural experiences in reading and all kinds of media?
I can speak to that. So we collaborate with, Molly Lee is our specialist, we collaborate with her as much as possible. This year, she's been spread across several different buildings, and so making it to our data meetings was very challenging. However, next year, we have more media specialist time than we've had, and so that could be an integral part of our, of our data analysis team for sure.
And our media specialists are also participating in the letters learning, in the letters training. Both Molly and Emily have been doing that training. We've really relied on them too, as we've implemented the new curriculum and looking at opportunities to bring in additional texts. They are an amazing resource, wealth of knowledge, and highly collaborative with our classroom teachers.
Good, hoping the state will continue to provide more funding.
Yes.
It sounds really good. And Birch has always been its own special little pocket.
Dr. Erkin?
I'd really like to see the numbers and see how they're growing, but I also want to point out, letters is a great training, but it's the boots on the ground, it's the teachers and the teachers that have chosen to continue to move forward, so we have to remember that this doesn't happen without their hard work and dedication. We know there was weekends, we know there's nights, they know they've been doing things, and that we appreciate that. The other thing I really like to know is here is the excitement, that we're celebrating even the smallest successes as we move forward. That's helpful, because every little success builds to a bigger one, and so that's exciting. And the biggest thing I look forward is we share this across the district, because if we're having success and somebody else is not, by sharing that, then maybe they can. So we can all move forward together, but it's exciting to see, but I want to make sure we understand that the teachers are the ones that are making this work.
Can I respond to that? Because that is my favorite part of my job, especially with our kindergarten teachers. I've been an instructional coach for three years, and we have tried everything to move the needle. And we celebrated all those, we were so excited last year when we moved our word segmenting and our decodable words just a little bit. We wouldn't have imagined, we've got the training, but now we have a tool, right? And we know how important those two things are, right? So we saw the training impact last year, but now the best part is our teachers are finally feeling good about data, because for a long time, data was really hard to look at, and they're feeling good about. My kindergarten teachers are so, they're, I mean, my favorite team right now, because they're so energizing, they're so excited, and I cannot wait for that to matriculate to our upper grade teachers. They're just filled with hope right now.
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate that acknowledgement, Dr. Erkin. Letters is, it's the gold standard, and it is intensive and does require a lot out of the educators, and our educators have really rolled up their sleeves and dug into this, and they're making it happen.
Any one else? Can I say two things? I just want to say, to build on that, I think in White Bear, one of our greatest strengths is that we're really humble, and so we should acknowledge that we are a leader across the metro area, and our educators and principals, we, our letters, not everyone will get to do that, and that is the gold standard, and so people leaning into that in a really difficult time, and so this data, I'm really proud of and very thankful. And then the fact that we're implementing a brand-new curriculum K-5 right now isn't an easy lift, it's huge, but it's really having impact on our kids. And so we don't often sing that story, because we just kind of put our heads down and do the work, and so I just want to say that. The other part is, is our elementary principals and all of our principals will be coming to work study sessions next, starting next year, and we want to celebrate that. And Julian was so awesome to be the first person to do it in May, so I just want to say thank you to Julian, Kelly, and Cynthia, because right now, as we know, is a really busy, busy time.
Thank you. I just have, you know, some comments. Hey, the preliminary data is like, just cheering all over inside, and the thought of the children, right? Because for them, the excitement of learning is so rewarding, and to see it happening, and to see it so quickly happening, I mean, I know that it's not so quick, but it is. I mean, like, for you to say what the preliminary data is already for this, I mean, that's really exciting stuff. And to have our multilingual learners, I feel, in kindergarten going home and bringing that into the home, and who knows who they're helping learn how to read English, right? Who might not know how to, because they are learning it and retaining it. That is really exciting. And so I'm also just so thankful, as Dr. Erkin said, that, I mean, this is a lot of hard work, and it is a humble school district, but nothing good comes from easy, right? We have to work hard in order to make great things like this happen. So thank you so much, because it's really wonderful. And these are the fun work studies that you're getting at, some of this good stuff. I would also like to see, like, the data more broken down, by our tiers and our students and the demographics, just to kind of see where, you know, just to see the overall, because I, I see it here, and it is affecting those students that have struggled probably a little more than others, and so to see it happening in actual data would be nice also. So if we could get that, that'd be great. But thank you so much for your time. Oh.
I thought of one more piece of, and you maybe mentioned it briefly, and we've talked about all of the folks at school and the kids and supports. How is it going over with parents? And I remember our parents who were so concerned about their students with dyslexia, the programs we were using. I mean, how has that been merging together?
Quite nicely.
Because they were just passionate.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I had spent some time early on in my career here in White Bear Lake with them, and just watching the evolution of our relationship and real to a partnership now, and their desire to say, like, our goal actually is that we're not having to meet with you guys, and we're honestly kind of at that point, as much as I absolutely enjoy meeting with them, they're delightful. We are, I think, because of many of this kind of standard that we took as far as the gold standard of letters training, really ensuring all of our educators are the most knowledgeable around this, we've just really taken a focused effort, and I think they're seeing that. And I know when we were here earlier with Principal Manier, he had talked about, he had been at a conference, and there were some families of dyslexia advocates and saying, oh, we're talking about White Bear. So I know the word is out there, and the relationship is, is a really solid one.
That's good. I remember they had a particular plan that they were hopeful for, and I'm wondering how letters is, is working in, probably with a similar...
Yeah, I think what's also exciting, you know, when you look at the REDACT legislation and all the requirements there, and how we could look down that list and go, we are already well on our way with all of those requirements, and we know how much they were lobbying and advocating for that, and we were already on that path.
I would add, our teachers are much more confident also in teaching students with any kind of reading struggle. We just, we just know more, and we know how to approach students who are struggling far better than we have. There's always room to grow and learn, but far better than we ever did.
Just to say, yes, we hope that colleges are adhering to our teachers' policies, and so that teachers come to us with that foundational reading instruction and training, not that we don't want to continue providing that training and those good workshops and all those things for our teachers, but we know true college, college programs need to also participate, and I think they're hearing that.
Yep, they are. Yeah.
Well, thank you so much. It's great news, and I think part of the overall helping too is that everyone's aligned, right? So, so everyone has the same thing to look at and go, this is how we're going to do it, instead of, well, here is it, here it is, I'm going to do it this way, and I'm going to do it that way, and everyone, so I think that really makes a big difference, and that's, that's a piece of it too. And I'm, hopefully that is helping everyone to be able to lean on each other, and so that, that's a good piece of it. So thank you again so much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Chair Thompson, I would defer to adjournment.
Second? Second by Ms. Daniels, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, we adjourn.